Hello all.
Hello.
Hello, Coach.
Hi, how are you today?
All right. Hope you're doing well.
Yeah, all things being equal.
Wish they're not.
So therein lies the dilemma, no. Uh, Russ, Russ is in California. Uh, it's, it's one of his, um, uh, professional, uh, development, uh, requirements for his license.
Right.
So, but it's not a bad place to have to go to.
Not this time of year.
Yeah, really.
As long as you don't end up in the middle of a forest fire or a mudslide.
I think, I think he said San Diego.
Uh, then, no. San Diego tends to have uniformly very nice weather.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the rumor, you know, that's.
Doesn't get too hot, doesn't get too cold.
For sure.
Do we want to pass on the board professional development? Wait until he returns?
Uh, probably that would make sense. I had some, uh, I was upgrading my, um, the software I have with the, uh, for Microsoft Office and had a little glitch with, uh, the spreadsheet, so I will have to forward those two ELS. You know, the biggest, the biggest update, you know, in them is the work we've been doing on a community engagement. You know, that's the biggest change. You know, in BSR, around three. Uh, and then the executive limitations, you know, changes, you know, are what we've, uh, done with the policy changes around race and ethnicity. You know, so, so those are the biggest, you know, changes, so. Just needed to get those in the record, so to speak. Or on the record, so to speak.
Hello, Roy.
How you doing, Roy? I think that, I think he's, um, in the other. The other space right now, he's got to change it to, we'll be over to the panelist side, I think.
I think Roy's on the panel, I'm not sure. Uh, participants, oh, Roy's a panelist at the moment.
Yeah.
But you, however, you, however, are not.
Nope, that's the. I think the, uh.
Can you bring Coach Kiss Christie over into the panelists? He's showing up as an attendee.
There, there it is. There we go.
By the way, it's just showing your picture at the moment, not the video if you didn't know that.
Yeah. Get everything all squared away here. There we go. So the, uh, actually, the, uh, the two, um, keynote speakers, uh, at the, uh, the conference this year were actually really outstanding. Especially with what we're, uh, with what we're engaging in, and I think that if you get a chance, Peter, uh, they did record, uh, the two keynotes. Right, and, and I think you'll find them fascinating. You know, and it's well worth, you know, because I, I bookmarked them because I'm going to save them because there's some good tools in both, uh, of the presentations. And they fit into everything that we're doing, especially around the community engagement pieces. You know, so. You know, it's nice when things you go to complement the work.
Hello, Hava.
Hey, Hava, how you doing?
I'm good. How about you guys?
Yep.
How you doing, Roy? Kevin said we're good at all things concerned.
You know, and sometimes the jury's out on that, you know, it's like. You know, we did, uh, we had a meeting this morning that, uh, actually went really well, uh, it was an hour and a half and we got a lot of stuff covered this morning. But where is Tom hiding?
Yeah, and can they see all of us and not?
Uh, there he is. There he is.
Hello.
And there's Kathy.
I did hear from Nancy Russell, she's going to be just a few minutes late, she's finishing up a VSBA yeah, A-Board meeting.
Cool.
So I don't know if she'll be here or, or, um, at home, but.
Alrighty. So we have a, so it looks like we have a quorum.
Majority, if not a plurality.
Quarums are a good thing. Alright.
Olivia won't be in attendance tonight either, Sydney is here.
Great.
Olivia's doing the tech work on the musical, so.
Cool. Yeah, that might, my, uh, one of my daughters was, uh, you know, that, but what our kids do, they're like techies and actors, so you know, one time, you know, they're, you know, they're doing sets and stuff, and then the next thing you know, wait, where'd they go? Oh, that's right, she said she was going to be doing that, yeah. Which is a great experience, um, you know, for, for them as they, uh, navigate, uh, the future. Okay, um, so I'd like to call the order, the November tenth, twenty twenty-one Hartford Board of School Directors Meeting to order. Uh, are there any changes, additions, and approval of the agenda?
Uh, as we had discussed, since, uh, Russ is not with us, uh, item number six, board professional development probably should be removed until he can join and take part. So I would suggest that one change.
Okay.
And also, Coach, um, somewhere in the agenda, the board, we have an appeal that we received from a parent of a hazing harassment and bullying uh, finding, and we need to schedule a hearing. So, uh, I was hoping to put that somewhere around item seven.
That, that would, that would make sense. Because that, that falls into that that category, I think, well.
Alright. Uh, absent, absent any other comments, I move that we approve the agenda with those two changes.
Cool. Alright, uh, if there's we have someone, Hava. Uh, we have a motion in the second to approve the agenda, uh, as amended. And I, I will be offering, uh, uh, my two monitoring reports, uh, I can do a verbal and send the hard copies, uh, to follow, had some, uh, compatibility issues with the software, the Excel software. That's the only other amendment I can think of. So unless there's any others, um, all in favor, I opposed. So moved. Okay, so our next order of business is, uh, global ends reporting, review the district's end policies and, uh, the relation to current events. So, uh, Roy and Kathy, you have the call.
Hey, folks, so let me see. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So each week, each time we do this, we focus on a different set of ends, and, uh, for this one, we're going to focus on academic excellence. Uh, we're going to start talking from the, uh, middle school who is focusing on different ways to to meet the needs and supports of students as they try and increase engagement. Uh, they have started a pilot program, it's called the Pathway Center. And the goal is to offer high interest and relevant opportunities. And they've designed it specifically around goal setting and with the goal setting, they're going to be focusing on building relationships with students and getting a, get an idea of what each group is working on. And, um, within that, they're going to do two things around reading a common text. And the common text they've chosen highlights a lot of common struggles that middle school students would, would engage with, so they can, they can kind of talk through the text to focus on what they might be working on. And then when it comes to problem solving, they're going to use high interest topics. And in this particular one, they created a, uh, like a marble maze for, for their first, for their first venture. Throughout the project, they're going to use data collection, um, both local level and also use, um, some of the testing materials that we use for all students. At the high school, um, they're in the N E S C accreditation process. And they're starting at the beginning of that process, uh, with Portrait of a Graduate. Um, for those of you folks who are, uh, familiar with the process, this would be, um, would have been back in the, in the previous iteration, core values and beliefs. So they've replaced the core values and belief statement with what is now called the Portrait of a Graduate. Um, I don't know if you folks remember, in the summertime when we started talking about ends, I mentioned that the high school was going to be starting this process, and there is a lot of overlap between these two. Um, both in content and in the process, so, uh, a lot of the community engagement components that we'll be looking to take part in with the ends, the high school, I think, should really consider partnering with us and taking advantage of that as they're building their portrait of a graduate because they need the same stakeholder feedback. So, um, Tom and I started that discussion with them, um, last week, so, uh, the timing couldn't be better for us to be looking at ends and for them to building a new portrait, so that's an exciting, exciting time for everybody, I think.
And at the elementary school, uh, as you know, we're, uh, in the middle of a new E L A program, and so I wanted to report on some of the strengths and successes that we're seeing. Um, as I meet with each of the elementary schools' implementation team members, I get feedback from them in terms of what's going well and what uh, are some of the challenges that are, that teachers are still facing and that we, we sort of problem solve together on that. But I wanted to focus today a little bit on talking about some of the successes that we're seeing. And so one of the successes that we're seeing, that teachers are reporting, that, uh, the writing portion of the curriculum is a real strength, and they're seeing some improvements in student writing samples, and they're able to collaborate particularly with their uh, special education teachers to assess the writing samples, which is something that we haven't really been able to do in the past to a really, uh, kind of a rigorous, in a rigorous way. And teachers are reporting that the new benchmark assessments for grades K through two um, give them much more detailed information about where their students are than what we've used in the past. And so they're able to group their students more appropriately in their developmental, um, levels, and then to be able to match those groups with the particular skills that they are lacking or that they should be moving towards next. And also, teachers are finding success with the, with the grade level texts that they're using. And they're beginning to understand the importance of reading the same book multiple times, focusing on vocabulary and having a purpose for rereading. And overall, teachers are excited about the engagement that they're seeing and the growing skills that they're seeing in some of their students. Um, and these are just, I, I just want to make sure that you understand that these are generalized successes, so I don't want you to think that every every teacher in every school is seeing these exact same successes, but these are just bits and pieces over throughout the different schools that people are seeing, um, and, um, are excited about, so thanks.
So if, if I may, um, we, we just, uh, heard, uh, recently, uh, from, uh, the agency, uh, and some of the national reporting, uh, around student loss uh, of progress over, uh, the last twenty plus months, uh, during COVID. And what are we seeing, uh, and, um, what strategies are we trying to employ to help mitigate, um, some of that loss? And, and any one of the three of you could, uh, address that, uh, you know, it doesn't have to be a in-depth, um, just, uh, an overview would be helpful, I think, for folks to hear.
I can talk about, at the, uh, at the middle school, I talked about the, the different programs. I think that there's, an engagement is, is the focal point with, with the middle school is the concept of if things are, if things are more complex than you're ready to attack, you, you can have a tendency to move away from it, and so they're just finding alternate ways to get students back into, into the game. Um, I have to be honest with you, in the meetings at the high school level, there hasn't been a lot of focus on the loss. I, if I had to guess, in, in a, some of the courses that are more sequential i- in the math, for example, and, and I just met with the chair the other day, there, there wasn't a lot of focus on, on loss, but there was a focus on the use of some, um, online resources that are more differentiated, so you can practice some of the skills on the side to the content you're practicing in the course, so if I had to bet their backfilling as needed through the online resources.
So, 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 uh, Roy and Kathy, uh, in this is one of those questions that you, you already know the answer to, so I'm going to, it's more for our, uh, listening audience. Uh, you know, you, you and, uh, Roy have shared with us, uh, a lot of the new tools that we have. Uh, especially the assessment tools that we have and have been using with our students over the last, you know, two years, well, actually, actu- actually three years. And so in a way, we're constantly monitoring change, you know, um, so, um, if you could just share a little bit how that's, uh, helping, uh, in addition to what you just mentioned.
So we could tell you about this, so if you, if, for folks that don't know, STAR assessment is our, is our local assessment that is is going to identify an actual grade level, and, and people would be able to say where, where a child's starting point is. Teachers are just getting that data, they've just finished the first window. Um, I haven't heard to date in terms of scoring. Where is in, if it's different or not? Um, but I think to get to your point, Coach, I think what you're looking for is, are the teachers utilizing the STAR scores to create learning goals? And, and for that, I think that that's a great one for, for Kathy and I to do a little more research and, and go come back to you all with an answer on. I know that there's been a huge component, um, I think Kathy discussed in when we were talking about the braided funds is really, there's a lot more, um, safety and, and basic needs taking place still in the classroom. We thought we were going to be full blown, let's recover and start, start getting back to where we're supposed to be, you know, in, in quotes. And, and maybe the, the school communities are needing a little bit more support and supportive relationships. Um, which I think the thing will come to you with in, in the very near future is more panorama data that might give you how are our students socially and emotionally in terms of are they able to access their academics? I think Kathy wants to jump in on that.
I do want to jump in on that, I think one of the, you're, you know, to your first question about, um, you know, what are we doing to address learning loss, and it just brought me back to the fact that what, at least our, our youngest, what I'm seeing our youngest students struggle with is learning how to be back in school and, and figuring out how to um, socially and emotionally manage themselves, and as you know, if we, if we don't address that first, we can't get to the academic part, so while we have been assessing them, um, like I said, through the benchmark, this new benchmark assist, assessment system and using unit assessments and what we call just-in-time assessments so that we can identify where kids are right now and address those needs as they happen while still giving them access to grade level material, so that we're not necessarily trying to fill the gaps, but addressing the specific needs that they have to get to that specific grade level content. Like just in time, like what are the prerequisite skills that they need to access that right now, rather than trying to fill in all those gaps, because we know that's just not gonna, that's just not gonna happen. So first, addressing the social emotional needs and then addressing some of those academic needs and sort of in that order.
Thanks, Hava.
Yeah, thanks for letting me jump in, Coach, um, Kathy, I just love that you jumped in with that, um, because that's where my brain is tonight. Uh, is really thinking about those youngest learners and their social emotional development. Um, and, um, from my, my personal experience, I'm seeing and, and know that, um, our students don't have the social emotional skills and are not, would not be, on average, would not be considered school-ready um, by the standards we used to say five years ago. Um, so that sort of, um, brings a question to my mind specifically about youngest students, but we can extrapolate to all the students and say, is this going to be informing directions that we are going in long-term? Are you guys going to be looking for some strategies for, say, correcting the course, if you will? And are we going to be looking at potential budgetary implications about doubling down on our youngest learners now to get them on course, so we don't have twelve years of bringing them back? That was maybe a bigger question than you can answer in one meeting.
Well, I, I think, you know, in order to, uh, uh, you know, that's, that's that broader question. But as you will see, it is addressed every spring. Uh, because we do get a formal, uh, reporting, uh, from every quarter of our school community and where they're at, school by school. Uh, and grade level by grade, grade level. Uh, you know, that's our year-end reporting, uh, piece, uh, that gets done, and it also shows the plan of action that's going to be used because that's part of the action planning component, as it used to be called. But, uh, Peter.
Yes, um, realizing the value of the annual report out that we have, you just described. The two questions that you both asked uh, sort of makes me wonder if we should change slightly the format of this global ends reporting, um, report, it has, this is not a criticism of the reports we've been receiving, we get what we ask for. But I was wondering if we should ask for something slightly different. Um, in the past, when the school board has been taking on projects, we have done what is called a SWOT assessment, which stands for, for those of us who haven't heard of it before, a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats assessment. I don't know if that is the appropriate structure to report against, but I would be very interested in if we had sort of not only what is new and coming down the pike and how we are hoping that it will be successful and could lead to great things, but sort of uh, what the issues are that the teachers and the, uh, faculty, uh, staff, administration are all facing, what resources they think they have to address those issues and, uh, what opportunities they have and so forth. So I don't know if SWOT is the right rubric for approaching that, but something that sort of gives a little bit more depth and so forth to us as the board uh, would, I think, be a useful thing, uh, as we go forward, particularly given the. Uh, as we go forward, particularly given the rather. But mildly stressful environment, which the schools are functioning at the moment.
Peter, can I ask clarifying question on that?
Certainly.
Is that something where you might have targeted items that you you, the board, might want to identify? Before we went to the next meeting, or are you thinking we're going to analyze and bring them as we come?
I think that I was more thinking that sort of. An awareness of what the school is facing is what and you being in the schools will know much more than we would. Uh, some of us get a significant amount of feedback from the communities, uh. But those quite frankly tend to be the the negative side because people who are happy don't tend to come forward and raise issues. Um, but we don't really have. Eyes in the schools in many ways. And so. If you're bringing forward these new programs, you're talking about. In that context, you would say, we think that this has a chance of success will provide the following benefits. But we're also worried about X, Y, and Z. Leading to not po- possibly getting the full measure of of results we would hope for. And I'm just thinking sort of if we had that kind of. Um, analysis brought to us as part of this particular report. It might give us a bit more insight into what's happening in the schools. Because the questions that Coach and Hava had were sort of at, you know. What's happening because of the kids and how they're stressed out and those kinds of things, what happens because of? The missed opportunities, the missed engagements with other students and so forth. That COVID is putting on us and we're under a lot of stress as both a school district and as a community. The school district, of course, mirroring the stresses of the community. And being able to take that into account and understand what's going on might help us do our job better.
Well, um, one of the things that I noticed in, you know, listening to uh these reports. Uh, and reading the information that Tom submits and doesn't always, uh. Give the, you know, the long winded explanation to them uh in the reports, especially the monitoring reports because we read those. Um, what I found interesting over the last couple of years. Uh, because of our investments as a district. Into uh the psychosocial uh portion of our work. You know, like hiring, um, uh. Uh, a school psychologist, for example, utilizing our own services uh for social work. You know, within the schools, uh, and not necessarily relying on a lot of contract work. Uh, giving control, you know, over the dynamics. Back to the folks on the ground, you know, being, you know, Tom and Roy and Kathy and the rest of the administrative team. Uh, and I think some of that analysis that you're talking about and the questions that Hava raised. You know, can can uh be reflected, you know, like in that and and Roy mentioned. You know, our investments in panorama, for example, and the value, you know, of that because. Now we have knowledge, we have data to support what's going on in those certain areas. So it it it's it's a good point, Peter. And I think that uh that's helpful for uh not only the board, but the community at large, you know, watching.
Yeah, I think, um, two, as the board considers, you know, the review of the ends, this, um. Item might gain more significance on the agenda uh as we go forward. So.
And I. I want to make it clear, I was not being critical of what you presented to us. It's just, I've tried to figure out how we can improve on it.
No, it's sort of evolved because if you remember the training we did last year on policy governance, um, this was sort of a new. Section on the agenda, so we're evolving.
Which I'm really proud of us for doing. You know, it's not the same old same old, you know, and 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 that's, you know, a sign of uh of. Progress, uh, you know, not necessarily perfection, but progress.
No, I think it's a good idea and, you know, for us to know a little bit more about what you're expecting is very helpful because up till tonight. I mean, there hasn't even been a discussion on that. It's been a reporting out and move on, so.
So it must have been, it it must have been stimulating, you know, it 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 stimulated the board to a new. Uh, Nancy, you have the com.
I have I have the the board for a minute or the floor.
Yes, you do.
I I have to agree. I think that the more that the board knows what's going on in the school. That we can make educated, sound decisions. And if we don't understand or don't know what's happening in the schools themselves. We can make a decision, but we're making a decision based on something that someone is telling us that we really don't know. And I'm not saying that you guys are not telling us the correct things. I'm just saying that I think that we as. Myself as a board member needs to have more information so that I can be making. Sound, better educated decisions. And I think the more the information that we have, that the better our decisions will be. For our students and for our families.
Yeah, and I I think as as we go forward with this particular agenda item. We need to be sort of more explicit so that everyone's aware, this is what we focus on, the ends, they're supposed to be. The be all and end all of what the board focuses and what we do. So we should somehow figure out how to, um, make that. Explicit and concise too, because we can't, you know, spend two hours on that. Need to. Really hit nail it, you know, really get it down pat so that we do what Nancy just said.
Cool. Well, well, thank you. I I think I I can see Kathy and Roy uh feverishly taking notes. So so that, see, I am paying attention.
I'm surprised you can see that.
Hey, you you know, re- remember, I I did spend a little time in the classroom. And tho- those skills don't go away, which is really scary. You know, some people go like, how'd you do that? What did, okay, we won't go there. Um. Thanks a lot. That that was engaging and I think that, uh. Anytime that we do this, uh, it's just, it ends up being good for the district. So thanks a lot, Peter, Hava, and Nancy, Roy, Kathy, and Tom. Unless there's any other uh uh comments, we'll move on to uh our communication and support to the board. And during that, um, uh, component, uh, we hear from our student representatives and from the superintendent. You know, what what a, you know, what a cavalcade that is.
Well, it's sort of interesting because with two student representatives that are both very, um. Active and very confident, we had reports from both of them tonight, so. Sydney is going to do hers and hopefully encompass what Olivia would have said had she been here.
Great.
Beaten away, Sydney.
Do you have the slideshow?
I am working on it. I apologize.
Roy's got the. What would you call it? The the board.
Yeah.
He's got the control panel for tonight.
Cool.
Alright, cool.
Okay. So currently in student life, um, ball sports just recently ended, um, within a week or two weeks ago with good results. And one of the recent changes that a lot of people have noticed, um, all over the state is that the VPA has currently. Made a new announcement to every sport in the state, um. About the new rules and regulations for all events and all Hartford teams ended their season with good results. Students are more adjusted to the COVID protocols and are becoming more understanding with mask mandates in a sense. Um, teachers are still very adamant about the mask rules and regulations. But there has been less need for reminding students about them because they're becoming more aware, um. Faculty constantly continuing to urge students to wear their masks in the building. Um, I have spoken with a few faculty members, they felt that there wasn't as much of a need to constantly. Um, remind students about their mask because they are being more cognizant about it. The Spanish department is currently working on a video to send to, um, countries. A few different other programs right now in South America to learn more about Spanish culture and to, um. Learn more about the have a better understanding, um. A lot of the students in the music department, as well as students and faculty throughout the building are getting excited for the musical that is happening. Um, this Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Um, and then students are getting excited for the winter sports season. That is coming up in very shortly because right now it is currently preseason as well as the upcoming breaks such as Thanksgiving break. And the longer break, which everyone likes, Christmas break. Um, the topics of interest is the music department. I have spoken to a few people, um, in the music apartment, both students and a faculty member, talking about how. What the struggles are currently and the band has to social distance and wear two masks in and outside. And choir has to social social distance and wear double masks regardless of the athletes, um, not having to wear masks. In parentheses, the music department has more mask and COVID restrictions, even though they aren't in physical contact with each other. They're singing, playing instruments, um, and student athletes in the student section don't have to wear masks. Even if they're outside, um, or not necessarily inside, but mainly outside while in contact with some. In some areas in the music department and a lot of people in the department are very frustrated and aggravated with why there are more restrictions on them specifically. Rather than there is on more physical contacting such as sports. Mental health awareness, um, a lot of the students and faculty members are more open to battling mental health, specifically during the pandemic. Many people in the district, um, specifically in the high school are expressing their anxiety and. Their emotions and how they were feeling from the pandemic and how it affected them personally. And a lot of people agree that it may be helpful for more training or resources on how to help put students in a crisis. Hope Happens Here is a great resource and they're continuing to spread awareness constantly. And they're doing as much as they can, although it is created by students and students do have a lot of. Like training and know have a lot, not training necessarily, but knowledge in that sense, but. A lot of, I also spoke with a few faculty members about this as well and how they believe that there should be some more training or resources for teachers. So that way they can help with the student in crisis if they can't specifically relate to the situation. Um, the Student Equity Committee is still working with Ms. Ibrahim. Students are adjusting to the new Infinite Campus Block Five placements. However, there has been a few issues where students don't actually log on the Infinite Campus and then mark where they are, so that causes a bit of struggle for. The administration, um. And then next slide. Uh, the areas of appreciation, the equity, Ms. Ibrahim has been working, has been a constant support and a great resource at Hartford. A lot of students are using her as a resource, which is great. Um, the administration has been doing a really good job and very helpful, very responsive with recent events that's been happening. The Athletic Leadership Council has been working very diligently on supporting and regulating rules for student section control. For events for the future and Hope Happens Here has also been working very diligently on creating new ideas to spread awareness and to. Help with the stigma around mental health. That's it. That was a lot of words.
Well, that 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 was an action packed report. Thank you so much. Very well done. I I guess when we look at that portrait, you know, of a student. We don't really have to look too far when we look at, uh, you know, our two student members of the board especially. Uh, you know, just a little side note there. Uh, next, uh, are there any questions?
There there's one thing I would add just to Sydney's, if folks aren't completely familiar with the Hope Happens Here, um. They, it's Caroline Hamilton is one of the members of it and she actually has a podcast where she'll. Interview members of the faculty and of the different local area. Um, athletic departments and talking about uh different mental health struggles that students may encounter. And just processes it, um, and it's a, it's usually like a, you know, fifteen to thirty minute listen, it's a very well done, so. Just putting a plug in for something worth looking into.
Yeah, Caroline is the president of Hope Happens Here and I believe she also created it as, um. Part of her project, uh, year or two ago, but she also wanted to incorporate that from Hartford after. Uh, St. Michael's College created something similar to that, so she thought it would be a good idea if we had something like that at Hartford.
Cool. All right. Um, if there's no other questions for Sydney, we will move to Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Uh, no, thank you, Sydney. That's great. Um, I guess first of all, I'd like to talk a little about the Equity Dinner that, uh, we hosted with all the administrators. It was uh last Wednesday night. It's kind of a new idea that I had trying to engage. The principals and directors and in a very stressful time in the schools and everyone's working so hard with work that I know that the board and I. Um, hold as, you know, very near and dear to our hearts and, uh, very important to all of us. Um, so I wasn't willing to. Uh, put it off while we deal with the pandemic and all that that entails uh in the school, so. Uh, I said, we'll we'll move this forward with a sort of. Uh, a very friendly, um, casual atmosphere over dinner and have a Dr. Mary Ginn and talk about. Few topics that are really pertinent, relevant to the equity work. And, um, I think it was very well received. We went from five to s- five to seven in the getaway dining room at the tech center. We talked about pedagogy, um, retention of students, tracking of students, uh, testing. Uh, students hiring of of staff and how we do that equitably, you know, in a district, uh, in Vermont. So it was just the beginning, but I wanted the board to know, um. How well received it was on the part of the administrators and, uh, I would just have a nice conversation. The other thing that I want the board and the community to know, I'll be sending out a a a big, you know. Email, mass email to the district in a couple of days, but I want to announce it here, um. New on our website will be a hotline, so to speak. So it's like an anonymous tip line for any problem that students or staff or anyone in the community. Uh, sees as a possible threat or some sort of risk to one of our students or staff or buildings or anything related to Hartford School District. The state just rolled one out for the entire state, but this is, this is for Hartford. We've, uh, the safety teams have been working on it for about a year now. And, um, so when someone replies or types something in that box, the email will go directly to one of the three of us. Here and we will direct it to, uh, the appropriate party. So if it's something to do with the high school. Obviously, we'll loop in the high school administration or one of the elementary schools will loop in the appropriate. Elementary principal to address it or or the authorities, whatever it is, but we worked hard. But uh we worked hard with the attorney too, to make sure that the, there's some legal jargon on there. That it's, you know, a false report is, is um, uh not a good idea. And you'll see it on there in the next couple of days, it'll be there and it's gonna be on the top of Roosevelt pages uh in the margin. Um, so I'm excited, we're excited about that. I want to say quickly that we have a couple of new staff, as you know, the central office is going through a real transition with several people retiring. So, so far we've hired a new director of buildings, grounds and safety who we met at the last meeting, Jonathan Garthwaite. And uh we hired a payroll clerk or payroll specialist will be her official title. And um she started about a month ago and she's, uh Nicole's doing a great job. Um, Linda Kucha will be retiring December thirtieth. And then we have another retirement in March, uh Linda Nash, who is the uh HR. Uh, human resources director. And um, so we just started looking for a replacement for her. So very exciting, there are a lot of changes. Um, things with COVID, big news last week was the state um. Rolled out the vaccination clinics for the five to twelve year olds. And we were told, our superintendents and principals were told that the, the clinics would be in each, each school, each elementary school. Uh, our students would get priority uh during the school day, making it very easy. For teachers and staff to get the kids or the students that parents have given consent to the um. To the shops, which would probably held in the gym. And uh lo and behold, when the state rolled it out, they didn't tell us, they just opened it to everyone. And before we could even start signing our kids up, many of the spots were filled with people from out of town. And uh our parents were sort of forced to take what they could get whenever there were available spots. So um, I wasn't okay with that and um threatened to cancel the clinics in our schools. But we did work it out that um, our, our clinics will be held from twelve to five. Or one to six and um during the school day, our students would take priority. So that we could organize it and take students down that had consent. And then after school, they would be open to people from other communities. So hopefully that's all worked out and we have three clinics uh beginning next week for all of our elementary schools. The other thing I think um Sydney didn't mention, but today we had a soccer team visit my office. And um the girl soccer team and the Fairhaven Superintendent um. On a Google meeting with the Fairhaven Athletic Director and the principal of the high school. Um, and they did issue an apology to the team, to the girls for the incident that took place. Oh, probably a month ago at this point.
It took place a month and three days.
A whole month ago. Um, so I felt pretty good about that, I'm sure people had mixed, mixed opinions about it. But um, the superintendent apologized to the team and uh took responsibility for what happened. And um discussed how they're gonna proceed and how they're gonna try to prevent anything like that from happening again. Sydney did mention that um, it really had an impact across the state. I mean, there were a few incidents, not just Hartford, but a couple of incidents across the state with other schools. That precipitated uh the VPA to act and um issued a, a statement that they want read. Sincerely before each sporting event. Um, and I'm just super proud of our girls and super proud of the, the team and the coaches and the AD. For really pushing this issue and uh, uh demanding an apology and demanding action be take, be taken. Um, showed a lot of courage, a lot of grit and I let them know that today that they made us all proud. So I think when the board sees one of the athletes, they could share the same sentiment if they feel. So um, that certainly made, was proud moment for Hartford to be represented so well. That's such a strong group of kids. And it wasn't easy to just continue to push, push this issue, but I think they got some really positive results. And let me see, I think the, the one thing I won't talk about later, but it uh pertinent to know is um. There's a lot of concern about some of the COVID response in the schools. And I say it to everyone and I'm gonna say, say it here to the board is that. I always veer on the side of uh safety and caution. So when, a lot of push lately about equity between sports and uh, and chorus and band. And all sorts of extracurriculars. And I'm trying my best to take the guidance that we get from the state agencies and Vermont Principals Association. Which governs athletics and uh band and chorus extracurriculars. And merge that with the guidance for the school day. And um, so school events and school classes like band and chorus that are actually credit bearing classes. Are similar to PE in the school. The extracurriculars like the drama productions and chorus and all the other um, some theater uh groups. Are similar to the sports, so athletics uh after school where kids choose to go to those. So that's just something good to have in your head when you're looking at the guidance. But basically, the students and staff and adults are required to man, wear masks in the school. So that is what I'm sticking with, with the medical guidance from the Department of Health. And the COVID coordinators in the district is that when you're in the school, you're masked. So whether you're playing instruments or running up and down the basketball court. Or playing in gym or uh walking in the halls, you're supposed to be masked. And that, that's the most straightforward, clear advice that I can kind of stick to. And I just hope the board supports that and the kids and parents and teachers and everybody understands. Why we would sort of stick, stick to that guidance. It's just uh, it's um too inconsistent to try divvying out. Where some state agency or the VPA has allowed for some uh flexibility with that. Um, outside is, is different, it's been really confusing, I understand. But I'm dealing with inside the buildings now for winter and I think that's the clearest thing to do. There's gonna be a lot of people who aren't happy with me because it's hard to run up and down the basketball court with a mask on. It's hard to play ice hockey with a mask on, just like it's hard to uh act and perform on the stage with a mask on. But um, it's consistent, it's something that I can support, I don't have any questions about. Um, and I think anything else is just sort of risky and inconsistent with the rest of the guidance. So that's where I'm at with that and sure, if the board has comments, I'd, you know, love to hear that. But trying to do the best we can with all the various players involved, so to speak, the various groups and constituents out there. Uh, everybody seems to have an opinion, states now issuing very clear guidance. And this, we live so close to New Hampshire, I think it, it's an added layer of uh stress and.
For sure.
Faulty, because their rules are all different.
Peter, uh you have a question for Tom?
Yeah, well, just to comment, I, I am uh fully in support of the choices you make. Um, uh, your leadership, I think, has been excellent so far and I have no reason to question that judgment. The one comment I would make however is, I think it's vitally important that we be as transparent. As we can about how we are making these choices and why they are happening as they are. And the opportunity to talk about it at the board meeting is wonderful. But I think there also needs to be found some way of addressing uh the schools and so forth. So that they actually have a chance to hear it. I don't know if you have the time to do it yourself, I would doubt it given how busy you are. But that message I think really should come down uh about some of the things that you have to juggle. When you're coming up with these rules and how the rules are done in consultation with the school nurses. And other things like that, because I know that you have been working on this extraordinarily hard and agonizing over it. But I think it's important not just to do the right thing, but also to be making people aware. That we are doing the right thing and why and how we've come to the decisions we have.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Communicate through, you know, the mass messenger system that we use.
So, so one of the comments, uh thinking about your report, Tom and Peter's comment. Uh, is. And okay, I'm, I'm gonna always be our district's biggest cheerleader, uh but I will be also uh. As attentive as possible around what we need to do to stay at a high operating level. And when I was listening to Tom speak about uh the safety team. It was a Friday night, December fourteenth, twenty twelve. And that was the night of the Sandy Hook shooting. And I remember standing in Tom's office with him. As he started working through, you know, what he was gonna do. Uh, to address that issue for this district. And, and that's when, you know, the, the first ideations of formulating that uh safety team that he's got now. Uh, came into being, so that's nine years ago. And how it's evolved, uh I'm really proud of, you know, that work. Uh, because everybody on, you know, the call has had a piece of that uh at some point or another. But I do need to credit Tom, you know, like on that work and the fact that it's still going on. That committee meets regularly and it's constantly updating. So too, to Peter's point, with our COVID action team. That is in place, you know, Tom has put resources and created a team. That he can get qualified support and information from to make those decisions that Peter's talking about. So I think when we have the opportunity to share process. That's, that's the transparency component. Uh, I was gonna ask Hava, uh if she would to uh give some thought to talking with uh. Russ about some of the comments that Tom made in the report today. That would be really uh nice additions to the uh board's webpage, uh the Facebook page. Uh, the work that um went on uh with the aftermath of the soccer game. The work that's going on continually, you know, that Peter mentioned. Uh, tho- those are good things for people to hear from as many different venues as possible, so. So kudos again. Uh, are there any other questions from board members for Tom?
I thank, I thank Peter for his comments, I think they're accurate. It's always a struggle to uh share the information uh as, you know, as much as possible. With as many constituents as possible, I do tend to rely on those, you know, infinite campus messengers. Uh, just because I know it gets out to, you know, over four thousand people, families. So uh hopefully somebody's bound to see it. Uh, just know that none of these decisions are made lightly or easily. I struggle with each one, try to put myself in the place of the trombonist and the hockey player. And the basketball player and the flutist and the teacher and whoever else, the parent. This year, you know, some schools are actually not allowing spectators at a lot of the sporting events. Some, some are allowing only home spectators. Um, some are, are doing distancing without masking, all sorts of combinations. And, you know, I worked really hard with the, the COVID coordinators and the nurses and read their state guidance. And I just, I, I don't wanna do that to parents again if I, if I don't have to. So I think the safest thing is to start with spectators with masks and uh really be strict about it. If people can't obey by that rule, then we're gonna have to do something different. But, you know, we're going on three years of this. And I think some parents have missed their entire child's um, you know, high school career. With performances and with uh athletic events. And I, that's hard to take, having been a parent who had two kids who were, who did both. So like Sydney, lots of athletics, lots of drama and chorus and band and jazz band and guitar ensemble. And on and on and on and I, I would cringe to not be able to attend some of those events and the basketball games and things. So uh we have to have some degree of normalcy for uh mental health, but we also am trying to keep everybody safe. So hopefully somebody out there hears that and understands that um, I'm not trying to be mean, I'm trying to be protective. And support all of these things and keep everybody safe at the same time.
To add on um what you said, um, just an update. Unfortunately, I'm not a part of the music department anymore because of, yeah, darn it. Um, because of some recent events that happened um and things that are going on in my life. Um, but I am still a big advocate, I still support the music department one hundred percent. Um, what, like I spoke with you earlier, that was my like take on it. I'm completely with the music department, I don't even care if I'm an athlete or not. Um, like I stand with them and how like the whole mask mandate frustration is even frustrating for me. And I'm not even like in the choir or in the band anymore, so um, that was just a quick update. But, yeah. It's a little bit difficult, um, there are some easier things about it though, that it's nice.
Well, thank you. Um, I guess we will go on. And the uh, the next order of business is our government, uh governance. Government, yeah, really, yeah, we don't even wanna go down there. The next order of business is governance process. And um, the first order uh is the recent letters uh to the board concerns. And uh possible resolutions.
Right, um, recently the school board, um, and any of those letters are in the Google file. That you can access from the, the school board's website if people out there want to see, see the concerns or this public, public info. Um, the concerns are primarily, primarily come from the elementary schools. And um, that makes sense to me because the elementary schools, I mean, they don't have any vaccinated students. At least not until last week, I mean, it's starting to trickle in. And I think that's probably gonna have some impact on the, the mood and the stability of our programs. And uh continuity of attendance and things like that. So I'm, I'm hopeful that that's gonna have an impact and, and be a positive impact. But, you know, up until uh last week, we didn't have, well, this, really this week it's rolling out. Um, anyone five to twelve who's vaccinated, so anytime there was a close contact, everyone was quarantining. And um, staying out or everyone that was a close contact was quarantining. So um, there's a lot of stress and anxiety in the elementary schools, everywhere, but in the elementary schools, I think especially. Um, I mean, mostly related to COVID and going from there. Uh, families and children haven't had a normal start to this schooling. Um, if you can imagine two, two and a half years of um inconsistent education at best. Um, students don't know what's expected at school, the little ones haven't really been in attendance regularly. To, to know all the rules and know the procedures and the processes and how school can be kind of regimented. Quarantines have upset the, the daily uh routines. As you don't know who will be here on what days and when they're coming back and uh when they're. Who will be here on what days and when they're coming back and, uh, when they're leaving necessarily. Um, so it's a lot of inconsistency just for, for the teachers as far as who's sitting in front of them on every day. On any given day, um, and of course you could imagine that the behavior of some students has really been affected. By all this incongruent and, uh, disruptive sort of inconsistent, uh, attendance and. Sort of, uh, school, school attend, um. Getting used to the school and acclimating to school in general, so it's, it's pretty inconsistent. I think we've seen a lot of behavior that's sort of, um, in response to that unfamiliarity. And inconsistency upheaval in their daily environments, whether it's home or school. Uh, most people could attest to that, um. We also started a new curriculum really last year, this is the first year I think fully trying to implement it. And, um, when we embarked on this, I'm gonna let Kathy talk about this in a minute, but when we started this, we knew it was challenging, it's intense. Uh, most of the curriculums that are worth their weight nowadays are pretty involved as far as training. And routine and how you follow the program, um, so this is no different, we knew it was gonna be. Um, a heavy lift when we started and in a pandemic, I think it's just made it even harder. So, um, you know, this is a good time for Kathy to talk a little bit about, uh, what you're gonna do with that and what it's all about or.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Sure, yeah, we, um, you know, when we first started this year, we anticipated, well, we all thought we were gonna be in recovery mode. And things would be very different than they are now and so like Tom said. Um, even though we knew it was, it's a challenging endeavor. Having to deal with COVID in the way that we've had to deal with it this year has made it even more difficult. And so being responsive to the needs of the, of the individual buildings. In terms of the professional development that's required to go along with this. We've took a, you know, we've, we've done a lot of consulting with. The implementation team, with the principals and hearing from the teachers specifically. And decided that we really need to use this year as more of an exploratory year in terms of the curriculum. And giving the individual buildings the autonomy to work collaboratively. With their implementation representatives, their principals, the E L, E L coaches and with myself. To be able to flexibly tailor this implementation approach to the specific needs of their building. Because we're discovering that every building is quite unique in, in their challenges. There are similarities, but there are unique, unique needs as well across the three elementary schools. And so rather than try to approach this as a district, um, everybody does the same thing. Really being responsive to the individual needs of the buildings is what's necessary right now. To sort of pull back a little bit and use, like I said, use this as an exploratory year and expanding the implementation period. Uh, over the next three years so that we'd be able to use this year to sort of. Relax a little bit and go at your own pace in, you know, and like I said, in consultation with the principal, the reps. Um, and making sure that each building is getting their needs met. In a way that's appropriate for them. And then, uh, year two and year three being the next two years so that full implementation wouldn't be expected until. The start of, gosh, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, I guess it would be, yeah, um. And then really relying on over the, over these next couple of years, relying on the implementation team. To derive the direction, um, with that expectation that we would have time to tailor. Our approach in a more appropriate way. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. Matt, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Matt, uh. I had another question, but I can't find it. But the one that just popped into my head was, is this curriculum being used as a teacher assessment also?
What do you mean?
Um, so now you spaced it out instead of just trying to do it all at the same time. So some, I know that some curriculums have been used to assess how the teacher is doing. If the teacher is doing their job correctly or efficiently. Do we, do we use it? Maybe we don't do that here. I remember I'm coming from a V S B A meeting that I've been in since four o'clock this afternoon. So that's all of this stuff is swimming around in my head anyway. So, but that was one of the things that we were talking about, so I thought, oh, I'm gonna ask that tonight of, of our people.
That's a great question to ask, um, we don't evaluate our teachers on the use of the curriculum. We evaluate our teachers on, um, more global instructional practices, you know, best practices. And not the materials that they're using because as you know, materials change, right? So you can't possibly evaluate somebody on the, the materials that they're using, right?
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Good question.
Thanks Nancy.
What Kathy talked about was one area of some of the distress and what's adding to the, the overall general, uh. Feeling of, uh, anxiety at the elementary schools. And like, like Kathy did mention, we started the year thinking this was a year of recovery. And we quickly learned that, uh, we might be in the worst of the pandemic yet. So never mind recovery, but it was sort of triaging, uh, all of the COVID cases. And, and it's still, still pretty bad, um, so. Trying to improve the working conditions and, uh, one of the things we learned last year that really relieved, uh, quite a bit of stress. And made people feel pretty good about what they're doing is, uh, this idea of a common planning time, a time when the students. Aren't in the building, that the teachers and staff can, um, be sort of guaranteed, assured. That, um, they can, they can do that work together with, with colleagues on how to implement a lesson. How to implement the curriculum, how to deal with a behavior issue that having, how to, how to work together to be consistent to address whatever need to have it. Um, both the middle and the high school sort of built this into their schedules for this year. So they have common planning time every morning where the students aren't there, but all the staff are, are present. The elementary schools didn't have the luxury to do that, being three different schools and in different parts of town, um. So one of, one of the things that, uh, the L M C, which is the Labor Management Council and the administration. In this case, central office administration discussed is, um, some sort of an early release, um. We talked about everything from a shortened schedule every single day like we did last year. To an early release, um, once or twice a week, um. Where we landed that we thought was some, some sort of a compromise given, um, you know, parents' needs and students' needs. To be in school and to have con- consistency and continuity in their, in their lives. Was really to recommend to the board that, uh, after Christmas or, uh, winter break, December break. We, we do an early release every week at the elementary level, um, so it would be an hour early release. Um, every week for the remainder of the school year.
Every day?
No.
The whole week?
Once a week.
Once a week, okay. Sorry, alright, thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
It's okay.
Clear, I want to be clear on that. That, that's a proposal. Well, it was discussed, so. Day, shortened schedule like we did last year to, um, you know, once or twice a month. But really to have the impact that we wanted, wanted to have, I feel like it needs to be regularly, you know, once a week. And it's, it's an hour, which I know is a big ask, but there will be one day a week where the, the school lets out. Um, around two o'clock instead of three o'clock and, um, kids go home and. Uh, the staff is able to regroup and think and, uh, get some good work done. Whether it's E L curriculum work or math work or behavior management, uh, training or planning, um. It will be focused, it won't be just, okay, everybody's going, let's party, that's not at all what we intend, but time to, uh. To do the work in a concerted, organized fashion, uh, that they haven't been able to do thus far, um. And I think that between that and the E L, um, changes that Kathy talked about. That's really what we, we came down to is ways to remediate, um, all the issues that you saw in the letters. The issues that I've discussed the last couple of board meetings, um, is there anything? Ryan and Kathy were both with me for all of these meetings, anything I missed?
No.
So I think that's where we're at and we'd just like to have some discussion with the board about whether you support that. Uh, I know it's a big ask for the community and I know the board hasn't always been supportive of early release time. It's, it's hard for the, for the parents to plan, it's hard for the parents to work around. But we thought once a week, uh, was consistent and manageable enough and especially starting in January and not starting, you know, tomorrow. So they would have time to work with their daycares or work with, uh, their schedules to, to be able to. Help us out with this, this need, um, I mean, and in the end, the goal is that. The education, the program will be, will be better, will be that much better because people will be a little bit, um. Uh, more ready, more organized, more, uh, clearer, clearer in their thinking. And, uh, feel good about what they're trying to do, it's, uh, it's a super stressful time, Peter mentioned it earlier. Everybody sort of, um, feeling the stress and, and, and tired of fighting the pandemic, uh, but yet we wanna keep each other safe. Um. I think we're in the up, the upswing with vaccinations for five to twelve year olds. And I think this, this sort of a, uh, a way or an attempt to address the needs in our schools. Could alleviate a lot of stress and strain that the teachers and staff are feeling. Uh, one thing I didn't mention that I will throw in there is, um, we do have a lot of vacancies. We've seen more resignations during the school year and more vacancies than we're having a really hard time filling than ever before. Um. And you can't, you can't find people to replace, uh, those that are leaving. As everybody knows, I think every business on, on Route Five has a, a help wanted sign. And pretty good rates of pay and hiring bonuses and so on and so forth. Um, so that's added to the, to the stress in the schools. Not having enough staff. So thoughts or concerns or recommendations or?
Uh, Peter had a question.
So, uh, you partially addressed it, uh, I was very interested in where we were with regards to staffing levels. Because that was one of the items that was raised in several of the letters that we received, um. Uh, I appreciate the, um, difficulty you are having in recruiting qualified staff or indeed any staff. Given the, uh. Trends in American society at the moment, uh, we are not the only sector of the economy. That is having this great difficulty trying to attract people, so I was interested in what you were going to be doing to try to deal with that. Uh, I don't expect there are quick and easy answers, uh, the other thing I was sort of interested in. Is there any statistics on how that is affecting class size or anything like that?
Well, yeah, yeah, do you wanna address that now or wait a minute?
Uh, that was fine and I, I had one other issue that I wanted to.
Alright, well, um, cla- class size, you know, that's an issue. I asked, um, Russ and, uh, Coach to put on one of the engagement agendas. I think we need to discuss how we do that here, there aren't a lot of quick easy solutions as far as, um, the trends in enrollment. We end up sometimes with a school that's sort of bearing the brunt of whatever the population trend is in town. Uh, in any given year or in any given time, I have a couple of ways to alleviate that, but that's probably a whole meeting. We'll discuss how we do enrollment at the elementary level and how we try to adjust it to respond to any sort of trend. Um, but some of the data that we have about, um, what the lack of, uh, staff. Or the openings, vacancies in our staffing, um, patterns has resulted in, we have, we have more absence than we've ever had. You know, we, we track absences, um, daily. And when we looked at September and Au- um, October of previous years. Uh, which the last two have been high because of COVID or the last one at least was very high, thi- this year was by far even higher. Um, for the first two months of school, so we're having incredible amounts of, uh, employee absence. On top of already difficult, um, to replace and, uh, fill vacancies. Uh, and that's of course added to the stress because when, when people are having. Prep periods or they have free time in their day, they're being asked to fill in for someone else who's out or had to go home. Uh, with COVID symptoms or had an appointment or whatnot, so everybody's just stressed, uh, stretched so thin. Um, and filling in for each other, they don't have any time to, to plan and, and, uh. Prepare for, for their lessons, um, that's part of the reason why we go to an early release. Because there aren't those demands of, there's students in X class that needs to have some adult, you know, watching them. When the, when the students are released, then, then people can breathe and everyone's available to, to do the planning and to do the organizing. Uh, that they need to do. I should have brought those statistics tonight, but I didn't, um, but the, uh, the absences are way up among teachers and, and, uh, paraprofessionals.
I have a question.
And we don't have the subs, obviously, the subs are included in that vacancy.
My question is about the early release part, so I've been over because. Because I can. Like we were delivering flags over to White River School the other day and it was in the morning and it was, the kids were coming in and all this stuff. And then, and so while we were standing there and thinking that most of the kids are already there and, and, uh. Their very nice principal is up there with his microphone and getting them to dance and having a great time waiting for everybody to get there. But then I'm thinking, that made me think now that if we release that, what, did you say like at two? So the kids still have to be put on the buses, how long does that take? Ten or fifteen minutes to get them all on the bus?
Oh, probably, yeah.
And then that knocks it down to forty-five minutes?
Well, I don't know that it's two o'clock.
Yeah, I don't know.
I, I don't think you could, I mean, don't hold us to two o'clock, it was, I mean, it was like an example.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Put it up here in my mind.
I think it's probably more.
More like one forty, one thirty, one forty-five, yeah.
I'm just thinking if we're gonna give them that hour to do whatever they need to be doing.
Give them an hour.
With their planning, their cleaning or whatever it is they have to be doing. That we wanna remember that that's gonna take extra time, especially.
Right.
For the three younger.
We'll make sure.
In there, I'm, I'm just asking.
Decides it's an hour, we'll make sure it's an hour. Usually staff, that's different in every school, not every staff person goes out to dismiss, you know, all the kids with daggers, so.
Right, right.
That everybody's not on duty every single afternoon.
Exactly, right, yeah, okay.
You're right.
I just, yeah, sorry.
Sometimes the best laid plans are whittled down and then amounts to nothing. I think it took up ten minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and the bu- the buses have been another stress, I get lots of complaints about busing, uh, I think they are really truly doing the best they can. But they have shortages too, our bus drivers are paid well, but they work, you know, four hours a day. Uh, not everybody can afford to work fo- four hours a day, they don't have something to fill in the middle, so, uh, they're strapped too. And, um, we've had less interruptions in most of our neighboring school districts, but I know parents have been very. They're very upset with me about, you know, thirty minute delays and forty minute delays.
Right.
Hmm, but we haven't had any canceled routes, some of our neighbors have had routes just be canceled, we can't do this.
Right, yeah.
Thank you Nancy.
And I read just this morning to that Seattle had to close down a whole mess of schools because they were just short-staffed. And I read just this morning to that Seattle had to close down a whole mess of schools because they were just short-staffed. So they're not even going to be open on Friday at all.
Yeah. Well, one of the things I worry about and the reason why the board and I certainly have to be very careful with this issue is um some some of my colleagues have dealt with um pretty extensive uh resignations and pretty extensive movement during the school year. I know one Duke School District where they have three administrators resigning at the holiday break. Uh I can't even imagine what that would be like in a small Vermont school district. But I don't know of a superintendent who isn't contending with this very same issue in the state of Vermont. We talk regularly and um most are are very stressed and they're very strapped for the same reasons I mentioned tonight. COVID and restrictions and quarantining and close contact tracing and behavior and inconsistencies and staffing. So there's been a few articles, Mont Digger, Valley News, New York Times, all about this very topic.
Hava, did you have a question?
Hi, yeah, thanks, Coach. I just had a quick question. Um and and I just want to say in in general, I I really glad to hear about this. I I think we just really need to support our teachers um to make sure that they don't feel like um they need to be handing in resi- resignations right now. Um so I'm I'm for supporting the system and getting through, because the more we invest now, um right, if we accommodate now, we don't have to remediate later. Um that's my philosophy, but um I'm just wondering with the early release, if we've looked at all to offer something in exchange, parents surprised you get your your kids back for an extra hour every Wednesday, but we're gonna off, we we the the school district are now implementing a.
I think I heard enough to probably understand.
She is very sketchy uh internet service where she is.
Sorry, guys.
Maybe if you shut your video off, you'll get more power for your uh voice. Audio. That's Kathy's trip.
Cause I live in the same neighborhood.
Doesn't seem to be working at the moment.
Yeah, well, what uh part of what she was talking about, we actually have discussed, and and I'll be honest. I I do think it's a very good idea, and I think it warrants investigation. I think what's hard right now with trying to replace the the time that the teachers would be with the students with some other alternative. You like an enrichment program or hiring VINS or bringing in some consultants or someone else to work with the children while the teachers have that hour early release. Uh no one can seem to find staff. So everybody that we turn to for support lately is either understaffed or closing. I mean, literally, like i- it's uh, you know, some of the agencies we've depended on can't can't staff their own programs, let alone try to come into the school and relieve us. So it is a terrific idea, and it's something that, you know, I look to as we were in a more normal sort of academic year, but this year, we can't find anyone to do anything, to be honest.
It's hard.
Yeah, I mean, it is something I think we could still keep on the back burner to investigate as if you decide to do the early releases, but um I just can't, you know, sort of pause or hold up what we're trying to do for the teachers by saying we're gonna have someone else come in and uh fill this time.
Thanks, Hava.
Hava, are you, do you have something to say?
No, she came back.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all right. I I don't want to jump in front of you if you have more, but I do have one more question about this, or perhaps it's more of a comment. For many of the families, uh having their children in school is not only a matter of education, but it's an economic necessary. Uh they need to be able to work, uh and this is particularly hard on single families, uh single parent families and so forth. Uh because of that, I would suggest that it's incumbent upon us to engage with the community about this decision, giving them a chance to provide feedback. I know that we're, our efforts to engage with the community have had or not always is, been not been as successful as we would like at times, but I would very strongly urge that we try to set aside a period of time, uh invite the public to come come, contact us, comment whatever we can do to try to get some feedback on this and engage in a dialogue with the community before we implement it. Uh and see if uh not only we can sort of address concerns, explain why we're doing it and so forth, but perhaps see if there are any alternatives we can come up with that will allow families to figure out how to deal with this better. I don't know what kinds of services are available uh or other kinds of things, but engaging in an in a dialogue with and a conversation with the community, I think, is is important.
I have to agree with Peter. I think that's very true. We do need to ask, I mean, the largest daycare center in our area is closing. They're they're closing. They can't get staffed. They've already had to take out two rooms of, two classrooms out of their daycare. Uh when we reopened, we opened half staff, half number of kids. The daycares are hurting for staff, so they can't come in and take over, like, take the after-school programs.
Right.
Like some we're doing it that we've used in the past. It's it's.
That's actually part of part of why uh I suggested if we do this, we start after the holiday break in January, not right away, because I think families are going to find this hard, and they rescheduling and and their daykids may not be able to support their students. So uh perhaps we could do a town hall. We did that last year a couple of times where uh, you know, online some board members and administrators uh answered questions in response to the public, you know, we announce it, we publicize it well and um and get feedback. Uh we've polled.
Well, I think I I it makes sense, Tom, that we do uh one of our community engagement, you know, piece. You know, there, because that way we're not making it up, you know, we're already there. Uh it it's part of what we're choosing to do uh in order to um you know, improve uh board outcomes, you know, that that was part of the uh, you know, that monitoring report we were working on, you know, uh you know, recently, and that's what it speaks to, you know, what is the board and the administration willing to do to expand that communication between uh the community? And and the the other the other piece to that, Vermont just got awarded a a very large uh grant, you know, for uh uh the third space, which is basically the after-school program. Uh and with this dilemma that that's great, but if we don't have people to help us disseminate that, uh that that's going to be sitting there. So it'll be interesting to see um you you know what the uh the after-school coalition uh and the third space group is working on.
I have no idea if it's possible or legal or anything else, but you know, if some of these families can't afford to have their children home because they need the economic income that they will get from working, maybe we could pay some of them to help take care of some of the kids or something, if you guys don't know. But uh having the conversation, you give us a chance to try to at least address it.
Yeah.
Yeah, or at least know where our our holes are going to be, so we're not surprised.
You know, and and we can find out if what those possibilities are, you know, to to address it, because it might just be uh e- even though you said that, you know, like off the cuff, there are programs that have been, you know, implemented over time that do exactly what you say. You know, so i- it's not, you know, as far out there as it may seem.
And and Peter, I think this is really what, excuse me, I think you really much more eloquently and probably with fewer tech issues said what I was really hoping. My questions about other programs where I I just, I feel like even if we reached out to community partners um that we already familiar with, like the Aquatic Center, and offer um a a swim program for X number of students and Barwood, and we offered um uh we offered skating for X number of students. So we reached out to Whaleback and maybe had one bus go out to Whaleback at the early dismissal, and we could have some sports or um camp, or we just reach out to our existing partners and see who might have capacity and actually maybe even welcome um having extra kids in those moments for enrollment for themselves. That might be a way to take some of the pressure off some of our parents.
So thinking outside the box is definitely.
And and that's. And and that's the point, you know, so and and the 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 good thing is there are revenues to support that, you know, without having to go back to our owners and the taxpayers to do it, because it's, you know, some of these have already been appropriated. Uh so that's that's another piece.
Yeah, it's a good idea. We could even reach out to our own um rec department. Maybe they could partner with us to support some students, and you know, again, we don't have to think of one hundred percent. I mean, maybe there are a group of parents that this is not such a hardship. Somewhere it really is, and we can figure out how to support them. VINS too, I don't know, uh Hava heard that, but that.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, that would be an exciting program.
And we do, I mean, our elementary principals are already thinking along those lines. You know, regardless of this current uh topic and this this current event, they think in those lines anyway.
Right.
We get VINS in and enrich our program, but also give us some of that really needed um planning and support time, yeah. Good.
Hey, so so ag- again, you know, I see pencils just blurring, so so so. I yeah, I guess the points were well taken, so so thanks, Peter and Hava and Nancy. Go ahead, Peter.
One last thought, and I don't know if this again is permissible. I'd be interested to know whether the teachers perhaps through the school process or through the union process or something could come forward with some suggestions that they might make to us. So they're uh closer to their students than almost anybody else, and they may be able to provide some insight. So if they have any question, any any suggestions, like, I personally would welcome their input.
Well, w- well, I think it goes back to what uh Roy was talking about, I think earlier. You know, with some of the uh uh the canvassing um that'll be going on, you know, at least, you know, at the middle and and upper grades, it could very easily be replicated, you know, at the elementary level as well. And uh with the rollout of the uh the new suggestion box or whatever it's going to be called, you know, on the webpage, um i- this is in keeping with, we're asking, we want to know what you're thinking, so uh and people like to be heard, so.
So on the uh the November twenty-third, which I haven't proposed to the board, our our second November meeting always gets um conflicts with the uh Thanksgiving holiday. So I thought sometimes what we've done is done Tuesday before, which is the twenty-third, would you, if you can do the twenty-third or support doing the twenty-third as a community engagement meeting, should we make that about this topic or uh add it to the ends reporting and goals process or uh?
I'd be supportive. I'd be very supportive of that uh just because there's not much opportunity between now and the beginning of January to engage. We don't have that many more meetings.
Right.
Uh and so even if it means we have to to have a special schedule to try to make sure we fit that in. Personally, I would be supportive.
Then you're gonna also have to take that information that you're getting from the parents and then sit down and look at it and go, okay, all right, they say, yes, we could do this, but then we've got to go to VINS and Lada and whoever else that we, that's going to be a whole lot of.
Coordinating.
Yeah, get it done by the time we get back to school in January, if that's what we're gonna do.
But having it start tonight, which it already has, moving to the community engagement piece on the twenty-third, uh just gives us a little more bandwidth uh to address it, you know, and and sometimes things just fall into place that way.
Well, and we can ask the principals uh to start thinking about who could support or who might be able to help support children if we're to go to this route, you know, while we, you know, even before the twenty-third.
Here's a thought too. I'll throw another one out there on the little scuttleboard that we've got going over here. The daycare that's closing is a very large building. Maybe we could make some use of that building, rent it, lease it, buy it, whatever. But there's two buildings over there. And it's large, and they've got a playground already set up outside. I'm just throwing it out there.
Out of the box, says Peter.
Out of the box.
Peter was saying.
We like our box.
It's not quite as restrictive as some, you know, that's for sure.
Thank you, and you know, certainly for the twenty-third, uh you know, in my absence of that meeting, I'll make sure that the teachers and the parents and community members and area uh community organizations, you know, participate if they can.
Right.
So we can have a rich discussion about this issue and how to remedy it as a community.
Cool. Okay, that that brings us to um budget and part two enrollment data.
Yeah, well, in your in your package, I put um two documents, one was this current year or last year when we were doing this, and one is this year. Um I always find this sheet really helpful that uh Jacob and Jim prepared, basically talking about, you know, all our, all of our enrollment on on one page. So it's a busy, busy form. You have to. Roy can share. Uh you can share twenty-two and then twenty-three. So what's nice is that uh we're seeing, we're seeing some nice increases. We have an overall, you know, this form isn't the end-all-be-all, believe me, this is a very fluid thing in schools, where we take a snapshot on October one, which is the one that counts for the state of who's here. So on October one, we were up sixteen students. Um six tuition students and the uh HACTC was up eleven students. Um you know, certainly. You know, certainly movement in the right direction. It's a good feeling to know that some of our planning and some of our uh our communications have resulted in. And our programs have resulted in more students and we just wanna keep moving that way, so. You, the board members know that this is a big piece of the budget when it comes to uh state funding. And the more students, the the better off the taxpayers are gonna do as far as paying for our program, so. I think things look good, I mean, we're down a little bit in the collaboratives, but you know, we've had a lot of transitions there and um. With Doug Heavy Siamese as the new principal, I think things are really starting to improve and systems are being built, so. I am not uh concerned about that at this point, but um. In our our regular pre K twelve enrollment, it's 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 healthy and increasing, so. I just wonder if there are questions about that or concerns or things you noticed that I might have missed.
I'm very gratified by the increase in tuition students. We know that that number of available students is dropping. Or at least historically has been dropping. The fact that we are able to not only hold our own but rise slightly. Says something about the quality of the product that we are offering our surrounding towns.
Thank you, I think that's true, I think one of the things that Hartford High School has offered that. We're seeing as a real advantage is the the flexibility in the programming. And and kids, there's a whole segment of the population that doesn't wanna be sitting in a regular uh, you know, academic class. The I L C or the Independent Learning Center where kids can sort of be in control of their own learning and be a little more hands on. Has resulted, I think, in a lot of uh increased interest in our high school. From from neighboring towns, so Peter's right, Hartman has less students, but we're getting more more of what's available. So that's actually like sort of a double, a double plus for us.
And and as we know. And especially during the uh. The presentations in the spring, uh and if uh. Russ was here, he'd uh, you know, shared that that piece, he does, he does a number of comments. Uh, during the presentation of the budget. About why some of the infrastructure investments that we've made. Aren't just good for. Cosmetic purposes. But they serve multiple purposes as far as strengthening the educational. Offering as well, because anytime that you do something that. Creates an environment where more kids and families want to be in your district. That's a positive. And and I think that uh the work that uh Tom and the administration have done. And with the support of the board, uh and then the Hartford community at large, because they're the ones that are paying the bill. Have have paid dividends. You know, so.
Yeah, well, that that's part of why um. You know, at the last meeting when we talked about facilities, I proposed that change at the high school because. It's not all about maintenance, you know, our curb appeal has been really important and. Um, some might look at that and say, you know, when you have all these uh outstanding maintenance issues, why are you thinking about? You know, million dollar renovation to the library and H lobby and it's because. You know, we have to be attractive, the more attractive we are, the more students we we get, the more uh. It's gonna benefit the taxpayers and those those renovations and those maintenance projects is gonna cost us a lot less.
Exactly.
It's a symbiotic relationship here, it's very important and we've done really well with uh. With the the funding because of these increases in tuition and increases in student enrollment.
Exactly. So um. Any other questions from board members and looking down, uh, we don't have the full uh screen set. So unless there are, Tom.
They don't need any action on that, just that was the presentation.
It was the next, it was the next phase, cuz cuz we'd, for anyone watching out in. Multimedia land, uh, this, this is part of our process. Uh, is taking that deep dive, uh, and as you'll see a little later. Actually, it's coming up next. There's a a new committee that'll be uh forming. That'll help in that dive, so. It's kind of a good segue, Tom, into the next one.
Yeah, the uh, the next one, what I did was include in your packet, the um. The building committee structure that we used when we. Were working on the Wilder School project in Bond. If you remember, the community members, we we failed a couple times to pass upon to renovate that building. Uh, and then we got serious. And we, the board and I developed a rubric for the building committee and a structure and um. I believe it was Peter who worked with me to, you know, organize those meetings and bring folks from the community in. And um, we really um. I I'm really proud of the product we produced, the the way we did it served as a model and I think. Uh, actually, construction companies that deal with school. Facility maintenance and improvements actually use that that model, cuz it works so well. So we had seven, seven members on the Wilder School Building Committee and uh one, one, at least one was a board member. Um, three of which were members of the public that had professional design acquisition experience. One uh member of the committee was a collaborative board member, cuz this was a collaborative program, you know, based on. Other, serving other communities around us, not just Hartford. And um. One staff member from one of the programs and then the superintendent, so it was a really. Uh, high functioning team, Peter can talk to this a little too, but um. We ended up vetting the architect and uh put out a request for architects, interviewed. Three, uh, I think we had like five or six that actually bid on the project, we did the same thing with construction firms. Uh, then the committee interviewed three, three firms and selected one. Uh, and then we followed through with the whole process of designing and. Um, scoping out the the renovation, which has turned out so nicely. Um, so the goals are there, sort of the. The requirements for the committee and what I would do if the board supported this is I was trying to tweak it for. What we wanted, which was a, you know, sort of current. Maintenance and facility projects in the Hartford School District and. Uh, tweak it however the board chooses around membership and and goals, but I wanted to make sure this. This was the process you wanted me to to use.
Go ahead, Peter.
It was a immensely satisfying process to be involved with, we met for over a year. Uh, bringing in. Uh, experts on various issues that we needed to be aware of, possible grants, uh, you know. All sorts of different issues, historical issues around the fact the building was. As old it is is and what that meant. And having that time, having the. Invaluable input of members of the community. Quite frankly, I didn't do a whole lot as the chair of the committee, I just sort of. Tried to get out of everybody's way and let them. Uh, move forward with their ideas and we benefited immensely from the degree of. Uh, knowledge of the field, uh, insight as to what parents were concerned about. Uh, you know, and so forth and so on, it was, it was. As I said, immensely gratifying to be involved with the way the product process worked. And I have to agree with Tom, the end product was was marvelous. And once COVID's over, hopefully, we will be able to take full advantage of what we've built for the. Not just ourselves, but for the entire surrounding community, the Upper Valley.
So uh, I guess uh that brings us to uh next steps uh with the development. So I'm gonna suggest uh uh that the board uh just uh asked Tom to. Bring it uh to that next level, um, you know, do some wordsmithing and editing and. Uh, bring back a draft of uh a proposal and we'll move as expeditiously as possible.
Was was the board contemplating something for for this year or were you considering? You know, this committee for something, you know, kind of a year out.
Well, well, it's it's more of the continuum of uh. The work that we've been talking about with our twenty five year maintenance plan, the five year direct. Uh, or most needy pieces, you know, short term, long term, you know, all of those discussions. That the board's been having and. Almost relooking at um. Some of the things that have already been vetted. And because of COVID, we had to shelf. So. Times are changing, data's changing, so. Hopefully, uh, the committee will be able to help inform the board on on. You know, the upcoming.
Right.
Work.
There may, there may be a few items that I asked the board. For guidance in this budget cycle.
Well, that that's understanding.
Because of that reserve account requirement.
Well, that was.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
But see, the other, there's another piece to this, uh, the finance committee is gonna probably have to meet. You know, as well, uh, because we still have uh audit. Audit pieces that need to be done and, you know, like you said, the reserves are part of the audit, because that, you know. Was part of the recommendation that uh, you know, we move forward on that. But this is looking at more of the global long term piece.
Terrific, thank you.
If if that's helpful.
Yes, no, I'm happy to um do the edits and then come up with a recommendation for committee and bring it to the next uh. Business board meeting at the beginning of December. But I'll probably also be bringing uh, you know, that. Facilities reserve account that we need to expend. So.
It which are, I I kinda look at those as kind of separate, you know. And and that. Or because it's phased.
Right, alright, thank you.
There just one suggestion is, and I assume you would do this anyway, please make sure that your new facilities director is. Helping with this, cuz that's a definite resource we wanna involve with it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, that's partially why we we um, we hired who we did and sort of. What he has to do, because there still are a lot of needs and and it can't all fall on uh the superintendent or, you know, me. Especially in COVID times. So thank you for thinking of that.
That would be a clear expectation.
Yeah.
Thanks, Peter. So, let's see. We have a draft calendar.
I didn't really wanna discuss this tonight, um, I'll tell you what what I did and I I sort of. This opens the discussion, I think word as the governing body of the district should sort of see this this uh. In the very early form. And this sort of opens it, it gets the word out that we've got a new calendar, getting feedback from. All of the sending towns that send to the Hartford uh. Tech Center. And uh the Career and Tech Center, as well as the collaboratives, as well as the whole Southeast. Um, part of Vermont tries to coordinate the calendar so that people have the same um vacations, they have the same start and end times. And we do the best we can to to coordinate that. And we also uh give it to the teachers and get their input, staff, community members, whoever, so. It will be a good month before this is ready for you to approve, I kinda like to get it out there.
Again, that's for the community, this is another one of those. Must do items that the sooner. We start at least thinking about it, or at least it's within, you know, our our thought process. The easier it is uh to get to the end point. So thanks for uh loading that part. I I think the the monitoring reports, um, you know, as I said, um, you know, my two. I will have ready, uh, you know, for submission after this this evening. Ran into some technical difficulty. Uh, but uh, you know, just to give a a short overview for those folks, you know, who have. Seen the reports, you know, before, uh, the biggest changes for us. You know, are uh in our job outcomes is the change in the community engagement. And the effect that that's had on our work uh as a board. And then the other piece with uh the monitoring of the superintendent's uh performance. Developing the new policy that uh uh Peter and the rest of the board and Russ. Were actively involved with, which was E L ten. With our uh racial equity uh work. Uh, was another uh major change, you know, like in uh that area, so. You know, I'll I'll have that final piece ready to share with you guys, you know.
I think mine was uh complete and I don't know if there are questions or concerns about it, but. I did send out E L five.
I don't think there's a significant need to discuss E L five if. Nobody has any questions. So I'd like to move that we accept uh E L five. There's a second.
So we, so we have a motion on the floor to accept E L five, do we have a second?
Second.
So Nancy has uh seconded uh that motion. Uh, all in favor?
I.
I opposed, so moved. Uh, this brings us to public comments. Uh, the board welcomes public comments, this is not a time for discussion. But the board is interested in hearing comments, concerns and suggestions from the public. And we went back to uh putting our process for that. On the agenda, so uh our community members know. Uh, what to expect uh when the question is asked. So, is someone monitoring the?
I have, I've been monitoring the questions, there are none at this time.
The public comment piece, what everybody remembers and supports. Cuz I pulled that, Kevin sent it to me, but I pulled it up on. For agenda, I think it was two years ago.
It it was one of those those things, you know, sometimes. They. They're successful and they get to the point of being so successful, you kind of forget about it. And so that's basically, I think, what what happened, so I'll 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 take responsibility for that. You know, being that that's part of the the chair's role to make sure that uh, you know, our agendas are. Complete. And effervescent.
Think Nancy had a comment.
Nancy.
Yes, I've been asked by um. In the we hours, it's, well, not so much the we hours, but early this morning, a uh person called me. And uh, I do not know this. And I do not know this person, I don't, I don't know the name, I don't know the person, the person told me who they were. And ask if I would please make this comment because they they're very uncomfortable making the comment themselves, so I have written this down and I, so I'm going to read it. Is that okay with the rest of the people on the board and Tom? Is that okay?
The only issue is that normally we want to know who comments are coming from.
I can tell you it is from a staff member.
Okay.
But once again, I don't know this person, I just know what, who they told me where they were and and what they do in our, in our district. So my, the quote is from this person. I am at the point where I don't want to teach anymore. And I'm ready to quit. So as you can hear in my voice, I'm very concerned about, again, I will bring it up, I'm very concerned about our staff. And I'm concerned about our parents. I would like to make a request of Tom, if he could please do a monitoring report on our staff and what's going on with them. I have, that's just the one that came in this morning, here's another list. My phone was ringing off the hook yesterday, my computer was going ballistic, I couldn't answer people fast enough. People. And I have done exactly what I was instructed to do, I've told them to please, they need to be contacting Tom. They need to be talking, contacting Kevin as the board chair. That I understand what they're going through and I can certainly sympathize and empathize with them. But it has to go to Tom and or to Kevin for us to continue to be able to do anything. And some of the stuff that is sent to me we couldn't even take care of, it's just things that that they're, they're, they're tired, they're frustrated, they're stressed, their children are tired, frustrated and stressed. Tom, you have a a wife who is is a teacher, I know that that it has to you can see that with her. I see it with many friends that I have and and we talked about it a long time today at the V S B A, it was one of our big conversation pieces today. We're not the only school system that's going through it, all of the schools are are having the same issues. But they're not my district. And this is my district and and when this person called me this morning and said, so and so told me to call you and this is who I am and this is where I work. And I would really like for you to put this in front of the board because I just, I can't do it, I I just can't do it. This person was very emotional and I was sobbing by the time that we hang up. So I just, I would really like to have a monitoring report on our staff, second please.
Well, unfortunately, we're hearing that from a lot of people.
I know.
You know, beginning of section four.
And see, see that that discussion and the reality is part of what we're going through right now, you know, as, you know, not only as a school community, but as a greater community.
Right.
You know, when we started our discussion about thinking outside of the box for after school work. Everybody's having a hard time filling, you know, positions. And everybody's, you know, stressed, you know, like, you know, at, you know, at that, you know, like outlook. Yeah, I was talking to a gentleman on Saturday. And he's offering twenty dollars an hour, you know, like to start. And people, you know, like are not doing it. You know? And 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 so, you know, it's there's, there's, there's just so much pressure, you know, on folks, you know, like right now. That it it's hard to unravel. Because it it's, it's being affected on so many different levels. But, you know, it's important for us to hear that, it's important for us to understand. And everything that we can do, you know, to try to alleviate any of that stress, you know, is is critical. You know, and I think one of the things the board can do, you know, is providing, you know, Tom and the rest of the administrative team, you know, the capability, you know, to address anything that's within that sphere. You know, to do so.
And with this, with this large of a daycare center that's closing now, that that adversely affects again.
Oh, yeah.
People, there's, we've, I'm sure there's teachers that have their children over there too, and now that's gonna be a problem for them because there are no other openings in the daycares around here, I can guarantee you that. We just don't have them. And I know one of the daycares over in either Hanover or Norwich closed down too, so there's another one that's that's gonna be hard for people who are already working, now what am I gonna do with my child? For my children and for the ones coming in that are looking for jobs and have children, they've still got a place somewhere for care while they're at work. Domino effects.
Peter?
Tom has already laid out what he is thinking about doing in terms of dealing with staffing issues and so forth. But because he's already sort of laid the foundational, I would be supportive of asking that there actually be sort of a formal report out about that process. And a discussion in that report of sort of staffing levels, just so we can get it down concretely on paper. And make sure that we have formally recognized what the issues are. I'm hoping this would not add immensely to the burden of the work he already has to do. But I I do think that Nancy has something there. And that having a formal report out as part of that work product would be beneficial.
And the thing is, it it's part of that part of the executive limitations as well, so it's, it's, it's well within the spear. And we do occasionally ask, you know, like for that type of a report, you know, so, you know, the timing, you know, the timings, what it is.
And I think, I think part of why I went on for so long earlier in the meeting tonight is that you know, I really think that all of us and and the board included need to be extremely careful how they respond to all of this because I don't even know if there is a delicate balance, it's very imbalanced right now.
It is.
And I said to coach, we talk every Sunday night and I said, you know, every aspect of what we do is is in stress, in a state of stress. So whenever we talk about anything, you, we we have to be careful not to displace one group's stress and put it on some other group. Because, you know, I'm very cognizant of the administrative stress right now. And I'm very cognizant of the parent's stress right now and the students and the staff and the office support people. Every single aspect is doing a hundred and ten plus percent of their capacity. So whenever we add something to someone or take something away from someone and ask someone else to step in, it's like, oh, boy. So I may ask you, like, okay, I'm glad to do this monitoring report, but I'm not gonna do this other one that's on the plan because, you know, we're all working twenty four seven, you know.
I understand it.
We're all having, I hate to say this, because not, it's certainly not about me, but I've heard administrators talk about their blood pressure. Teachers talk about going to the hospital because they think they're having a heart attack. I've heard people talking about, you know, nervous breakdowns and, you know, counseling appointments and just everything they're doing to to support and be able to be available to the kids. So it's like this, incredible. And I'm trying to keep it positive, trying to also break this cycle so that we don't keep saying, oh, this is so awful. Oh, everyone's stressed out, oh, no one else can do it. It's an interesting place to be. You really want to come in at a hundred percent for the kids, but everyone, everyone is exhausted, you know. Looking forward to tomorrow off, that's a plus, Thanksgiving coming up, holiday vacations and things, they all help. But it's a, it's a very stressed time.
It is, I understand.
So I I guess you know, we will, you know, taking, you know, into account, you know, everything that's that's going, you know, going on. I think that, you know, some of the the information that we're requesting, you know, had been delineated in the oral report, you know, earlier. But as Peter said, it would be nice to have it documented so that, you know, we have a point of reference. So.
Sydney would like to say something.
Sydney.
Um, so adding on about the stress of faculty members and teachers. As from a student perspective, it is very shown how stressed out the teachers are. A teacher that I'm pretty close with. I, they have been recently not okay in the school and it's obvious, they're very stressed out and they're very anxious and they're not having a good time teaching, they don't feel like that. I mean, they feel like they're doing enough, but it's not worth it, they're not enjoying it anymore. And so the message that you shared from the anonymous person who called you this morning, that was this morning, right? Okay. It reminded me of a conversation I had earlier this week with that teacher. And it is very visible on how teachers are very stressed out. And it's something that like, it's putting my own education, I feel at risk. It's not making me feel happy in school, it's making me feel pretty stressed and anxious just as they're reflecting their emotions on their students, which is never really a good thing, obviously. Because teachers always have to put up a front of how they're like a hundred percent in school every day, all the time. But, I mean, it's not the case, obviously. And and so I hope that there can be some, like going back to what you said, I feel like there definitely should be like a checkup or I I can't remember how you worded it, I'm having a, I don't know, man. And so, but.
Yeah, it it's, it's something that that we've talked about. You know, like doing, especially because, you know, you know, it's been twenty months, you know. You know, that that that's a long time to be under duress. And the thing is, I I see it in a lot of other places. You know, the when, if we were to ask Peter about his area of work and the fact that his, his nursing staff and the support staffs at the hospital are probably saying the exact same thing. And some of them have already left and made a decision, I'm doing something else, I can't do this anymore. You know, so that I think it's, it's, it's bigger than just, you know, school. It's it's society right now that's feeling that kind of pressure. You know, I'm done, I'm toast. You know, and and, you know, I think anytime that we have an opportunity to to help mitigate or provide any kind of relief that we can. We need to do that and, you know, hopefully we'll just you know, by following the, you know, our protocols and doing, you know, the the best we can. You know, we'll come out of this sooner rather than later. So we can regain our traction, so to speak.
By the way, I understand that it's in some sense a zero sum game, if you're already doing everything you can, there's the only way to do something different is not to do something you're already doing. So Tom, if you let us know what you're thinking of. Putting by the wayside, I think that is only fair for us to
Right.
Take that into account.
For sure.
I I think as part of the product of the dealing with the staffing issues, the stress issues and so forth, just having a report on it is an important thing and I I apologize for joining the call for this, but I think the it's worth the effort.
No, I totally agree, I'm just saying, I think there are things that maybe aren't so critical right now.
Yep, and I agree.
Yeah, I just asked boards.
I I do not, I do not.
Some of the other monitoring reports that may be not critical right now and we can catch up later, but this one is.
Well, that's, that's the point, and I think that's what Peter was getting at.
Yeah.
You know.
The people at work will tell you that I I have a favorite saying, which is you can only put five pounds of flour in a five pound bag, but after that, it ends up on the floor.
Right.
So, we understand.
Absolutely.
You got it. Okay, so, you you know, we 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 understand, we we can move to the consent agenda at this point.
And let me talk quickly, there is an appeal that the board, I think, received in an email. I have talked with the board's attorney and if at all possible, we'd like to hear that appeal on the seventeenth. I don't think it'll take very long, it would just be the be the the elected board member. So the students wouldn't, would not have to attend that, it would be an executive session with the many of the five board members as possible facilitated by the the board's attorney, Bernie Lynn. And I'll send around directions and procedures so you know exactly what that is, but it's an appeal of the hazing harassment and bullying student policy and procedures. And it's a very formal sort of set process. I haven't invited the parent yet because I wanted to make sure the board could probably possibly do this seventeenth at five or six o'clock.
Perfect.
Okay. Will at least have a quorum. And and for for our new board member, when you hear us talk about quasi judicial within our role. This is one of those quasi judicial functions, you know, of the board.
Right.
Yeah, you know, you'll get explicit directions from me and from the attorney before you perceive, you know, the word of how you're supposed to respond or act. But if we can do this, the seventeenth, would it be five o'clock or six o'clock? And it would be in the same format, I think.
Right, right.
Some sort of a hybrid type format.
Yeah.
Where I I'll probably be in this room and whoever else can be in this room. Perhaps the parents and then the board will be how they are tonight or however you prefer.
Well, you know, this is, this is, again, it's a product of our environment right now. You know, at least the physical piece, you know, of the process. Because for the last months, one of the the boards that I serve on that is a judicial board, that's how we've been meeting. twenty months, uh, one of the, the boards that I serve on, that is a judicial board, uh, that's how we've been meeting. Um, and we will continue to do so until we get the, the all clear call. So that being said.
It's the preferred time, five or six o'clock.
I prefer six just because it gives us a chance to transition from work. I apologize for making a longer day for you, but.
No, I'm fine. I just didn't know what we preferred.
Right. Well, 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 six is better than we used to do them at seven. So uh, you know, that be, that being said, uh, I'll take six too.
Going once, going twice. Right. Um, the other, there is an appointment tonight. So there's two sets of minutes, the thirteenth and the twenty seventh of October. And then there is an appointment, uh, if the board remembers when we hired Jacob Vazina uh three years ago as the assistant business manager, who was in training to, to be the business manager. Jim is retiring this uh December thirtieth too. Um, he may, he may return in some capacity because he's very valuable and we'd like to keep him in in some sort of capacity. But um, we um, I would like to nominate Jacob Vazina for the director of finance uh beginning January one, twenty twenty-two. And uh, hopefully the board will support that.
I'm in full support of it. Uh, by the way, uh, I want to say publicly how much I've worked, enjoyed working with his father, Jim. Whether doing the bus contract negotiations or any of the other things we have done over the years, it's been a joy to work with. He's always prepared. He always has the numbers. Done a great job.
Uh, I agree with Peter, you know, wholeheartedly. And it's a, it's a tribute to him, you know, and the relationship that he had or has, I should say, with our superintendent, uh, that's put the district in such a strong financial position. Uh, and that's been invaluable, you know, over his tenure. So um, if we can you know, draft a uh, you know, a letter and we can talk uh at another time about um, doing something, you know, uh, uh, in addition, uh, because of the nature of uh his service, uh, I think that that would be uh appropriate as well.
Agree.
Here, here.
Thank you.
So I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. So, so we have a motion in the second to approve the consent agenda, uh, you know, with the uh nomination and appointment. Uh, and if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
I.
I opposed, so moved. So, so I, I, I see Peter, are you queuing up our evaluation?
I could. Let me get it.
I finally remembered to put it in the packet.
I saw that.
Right.
Well, well, I, I saw Peter had that, that look on his face, like he.
Here it is. All right.
See?
Uh, okay. I now have it open. Uh, so the board was prepared for the meeting. Satisfactory. The board's time was spent on ends not means. Uh, we've gotten the means a little tiny bit, but I think it was appropriately. Uh, so satisfactory. Each board member was given the opportunity to participate. Satisfactory. Board treated all persons with courtesy and fairness. Satisfactory. Board adhered to Robert's rules of order as necessary or needed. Satisfactory. Board adhered to its adopted governance style in that it emphasized outward vision. It encouraged diversity in viewpoints. It exercised strategic leadership out of administrative detail. It maintained the distinction between board and staff roles. It used collective decision-making. It looked to the future. All satisfactory. And with that, uh, one last quick comment. My hats off to the, the uh secretary of the board, or actually it's not the right term, the transcriptionist who's taking the minutes. She's done an absolutely amazing job the last couple of times. Hey, with that, uh.
Well, that's Sherry. That's Sherry.
Sherry.
Yeah, you got it.
Yeah.
We're pretty, we're pretty fortunate and uh.
I just wanted to do a shout out to her because I know she's always listening. Roy has she done a great job of late.
Kudos. A and Roy, thank you so much for uh, uh, being our uh, our audio visual tech. Cause, cause I'd be, now that was pretty cool to watch that flash up there. I was, hey man, we're, we're getting eye class on this. Thanks, Roy.
You bet.
So Peter.
I move that we adjourn. And it was seconded. So the vote is?
It's a non-debatable motion. All in favor?
I.
I. So moved. And, and thank, thank you all uh for all of the work that, you know, you're all doing. And uh, you know, we'll just uh, you know, keep uh, I, I'll, I'll just, you know, as, as we're heading out the door, I've been quoting uh Congressman Lewis of late. And there's just a short sentence and it goes little by little, day by day, what's meant for you will find its way.
Nice.
So on, on that note, we will see you on the seventeenth.
Right.
Thank you.